Screen this morning or this afternoon and I'll do some further introduction as we go on. But you see, Naema Chambers Smith, she's here from the Tri-Cities Diversity Council, and she is going to be presenting part of the presentation or a couple of the slides. And she's helping us with the effort that I'm going to be updating the board about. So, welcome, Naema. It's good to see you. Naema and I have spent a lot of time together, yet we've never met each other in person. We've been on Zoom. That's our... She's the first person in my life that I've met only on Zoom. So it's, I don't know her anywhere else other than Zoom. So, Naema, it's nice to see you. So, tonight, we're starting a discussion around our 100% no exceptions. That philosophy is not new to us. And it's really around the collective efforts to... Sorry, there's things happening. Okay. Our collective efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, I have always said, and I continue to say, I'm proud to work for a district and be associated with the district for the last 25 years, where celebrating diversity is the core of our mission, and it always has been. When we say "we are," and when I say that and you respond "Pascal," it's not just a slogan for us, but instead it represents a tightly-held set of core values or a way of being that puts students first and that really values diversity, equity, and inclusion as acts, not just words. Every time we collectively commit to "we are Pascal," we are affirming that promise to stand in the gap and bridge the divide for, especially for our most vulnerable and marginalized youth and families. And it's my honor to do that work. It's been my honor since the day I stepped into my very first classroom. And I wear that cloak of pride every day as I watch our staff, and especially in the face of the complicated circumstances that we're all navigating now, watching our staff really double down on behalf of the kids and community of Pascal is just an honor. So, the purpose of this presentation is really for all of us to re-ground ourselves in the work we've done together as a board superintendent governance team over the last four years and prepare us to launch into kind of the next phase of that work together as a board superintendent team, but also to revisit some work around the Voting Rights Act that you, as a board, started pre-COVID. And we feel like it's good timing for us as a district to start that work again. So, my, within the first couple of years as superintendent, might have been my first year as superintendent, we really focused in on this question. What do we want our students to say about their experience in Pascal School District? And it really then fundamentally grounds us in the why of the work, so that every decision that we're making, every initiative we choose to focus on ties back to the why and becomes a cohesive statement against the "we are Pascal" commitment that we all have. So, one fall, I, every employee group I met with that fall, we did the same activity. And it was an activity that I was asked to participate in, in a training. And I'm actually not so embarrassed to admit anymore. I was at a training. I didn't want to be there. And I wasn't being the best participant. I'm just going to admit that upfront. I was a little annoyed that I had to be there. All of my staff was in one room, and they had all these superintendents in another. And I was irritated because I wanted to be with my staff, not with the superintendent colleagues. So, I didn't have the best attitude when the presenter asked us to do a quick write about what do you want your students to say about their experience in your district? And I have to say, I tell that part of the story to say how embarrassed I am now about my attitude, because it really was one of those moments as a leader that allowed me to re-ground myself in what is my why of the work. So, what I wanted our students to say is that I was surrounded by adults who inspired me to do more than I ever thought I could. They stood shoulder to shoulder with me and tore down barriers, stood on top of obstacles and drug me over. They stood in the divide and bridged the gap. I was given the opportunity to explore my options, discover my potential and passions, and act on a plan down a path of rigorous preparation. I left PSD with resilience, the resilient self-belief, advocacy skills, and content knowledge and confidence to walk through those doors that were open for me and kick down those that weren't. And then I scribbled across the bottom, "we are Pascal." So, I carry this piece of paper with me still, and it ends up in various places in the bottom of my purse, in the back of a notebook. But this is really a cornerstone for me as an educational leader and as your superintendent. And then I invited our staff, like I said, that one whole fall, to participate in the same activity. And that, that activity helped re-ground us or ground us in who we are up against the term "we are Pascal." I had stacks and stacks of quick writes just like this, that when I would leave a training, I would say, "Hey, if you would let me take yours, I would love to have it." And I still have those and reference those frequently. The following year, as we opened school, we asked a different question. We asked the question, "What are our students saying about their experience in Pascal School District?" And this time, we went to some data. So, we take what's called the Healthy Youth Survey. Our sixth, eighth, 10th, and 12th graders take that annually. And then we have, in our district, participated in the Center for Educational Effectiveness, EES survey. So, it's the Educational Effectiveness Survey. We've participated in that for as long as I can remember, even back when I was a teacher. So, we have decades of longitudinal data for the Center for Educational Effectiveness. So, we used these two data that I'm going to share with you tonight. But there was a variety of other data, including some data from some focus groups that we had done with my Superintendent Advisory Council that were really designed to surface their, their feelings of inclusiveness in our district with the practices that we were implementing at the time. So, we had that narrative data from a focus group. We had a variety of other data, like the data I'm sharing here. And we did data carousels with every group that, whether it was our administrators, our secretary clerks, our, you know, our nutrition services, our transportation, et cetera. All the groups looked at some form of data to really ground ourselves in. You know, last year, we talked about what we wanted our kids to say. Here's what our data is telling us that our students are saying about their experience. So, I just picked out a few topics to, of all of the data that we looked at. These are just a few of the data elements that we analyzed together. This set of data is from the Healthy Youth Survey, and it's the Children's Hope Scale. And what we know is that if students, if people feel valued and respected, that equals hope. If people feel ignored or invalidated, they feel hopeless. People who are hopeless are people who will make desperate decisions in the face of hopelessness. People who have hope have resilience in the face of circumstances that are unexpected or that are trying or unrelenting, they have hope to fall back on. So, this concept of hope has been important to our organization. And then you, as a board, approved it as part of our fifth outrageous outcome around wanting to ensure that our students have meaningful connections and hope for their future. So, when you look at this data set, sixth grade, there's not asked questions around this, but in eighth, 10th, and 12th, they are. The blue bar represents our students' data, and the green bar represents state data. The darker the blue or the darker the green, the more hopeful our students are. So, I'm sure as a board, you can anticipate what I'm going to say. And that's until that darkest blue board is 100%, we have work to do. We want every single one of our students leaving our organization being highly hopeful. Not even, I'm not going to even accept moderately hopeful. I want highly hopeful individuals leaving our system. So, when you look at both highly hopeful and moderately hopeful together, we're either slightly below or, well, we're slightly below the state across the board. When you add in slightly hopeful, we start to even out with the state. But again, I would argue that until we have 100% of our students as highly hopeful individuals that we have work to do in terms of that, that whole child's hope scale. The next slides represent our Student Perception Survey data. And I think an interesting piece to just highlight here, I've provided you three years of data. We have decades of data, but I just chose three years. Over the course of three years, we have had a significant increase in our participation rate in the number of students who are participating. So, in 1617, which is the blue bar, we had about 4,400 students take the survey. In 1718, we had 5,800 take the survey. And then in 1819, we had over 7,000, 7,560 of our students took the survey. So, while a downward trend is a concern for us, we also have to have to recognize that more and more students are taking the survey. So, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. It's not the same, the same students taking on the survey every year. But certainly, I want to see an upward trend, not a downward trend. So, all students are capable of success, no exception. So, the questions that fed this set of data are around, do students believe that every single one of their teachers cares about them and believes in them, that they can be successful? Rules are applied equally and fairly. That's the next set of data. So, anywhere from 77% to 68% of our kids feel like rules are applied equally. There's a general sense that things are fair in our district. Anywhere from 64% to 54% over the last three years. Celebrations of different cultures, our students feel like their culture is celebrated or that they get to learn about other cultural aspects of our organization. Fifty-six, between 50 or 48 and 56% of our students over the last three years are saying that. And then, students feel like there's individuals in our curriculum and the books and materials that are provided to them that look like them. And that is ranges from 38% to 44% kind of depending on the year. This slide, again, it represents those same three years. The positive cultural identity, students feel like their culture is represented in a way that's positive. They feel good about their cultural and ethnic background. So, you know, 81% to 83% over the last three years of our students are saying that that is true for them. 74% to 77% of their students, of our students feel like they have a clear sense of their ethnic background of themselves and their family. 70% to 78% of our students in the last three years have a sense of belonging. In my school, I feel like I belong to a group of students. And then, 66% to 74% feel like they're respected in our schools as much as any other student. So, I'm treated with as much respect as other students are treated. So, again, those are just some data pieces that I highlighted out of, like, it's a comprehensive, robust set of a data. But I wanted to highlight for you the kinds of data analysis that we did when we asked ourselves those two questions over the course of a couple of years. So, as a board, you may remember that we then also tackled a working definition of equity. And we actually relied on our student board representatives as they came back from WASDA in 1718 to help us through this process. So, that year, the students that were on our student, our student board representatives had a fundamental interest in the concept of equity. So, at WASDA, they attended, almost every session they attended was on equity. And then they came back and did a report for us. And they offered this definition of equity as our working definition. And at that point, as a board, we, we kind of accepted this as our working definition. So, equity is giving every student what they need. And that Vanessa Quiros was the student board representative at the time who formed this definition for us and offered it to us as our working definition. So, that has been our working definition of equity as a board. So, how have we aligned our system with our working definition of equity? So, certainly, Pascal School District has a mission and values. Our mission is putting students first, to make learning last a lifetime, celebrating academics, innovation, and diversity. We've worked together over the last four years as a board and superintendent to get really clear about some of our values. And beyond our, our governance team, our system as in totality has worked really diligently to identify their own whys in alignment with these values. So, all students are capable of success, no exceptions. And the students' perception of the way that they're treated by their teachers is in alignment with this. The, that was one of our highest ranking areas on our Student Perception Survey data in over, in the 80% of our students feel like their teachers are walking that talk every day. So, we, that commitment to every student is capable, all students are capable of success, no exceptions, is evidenced by your board direction in support of our five outrageous outcomes. And then, I described as we opened the meeting, our commitment to "we are Pascal," which again is that collective commitment to standing in the gap and bridging the divide, especially for our most vulnerable and marginalized youth. We used that umbrella to shape and frame our strategic planning efforts last year. So, the Stakeholder Work Group, who helped identify the five priorities that is, that is, that were identified in our strategic plan, we did some work around what does this really mean to us? We defined marginalized. We defined vulnerable. And we use that as the lens that we wore as we did the work of identifying the five priorities for our strategic plan. And then that's just fundamentally grounded in hope. Again, people who have hope for their future, they, in the face of challenges, make healthier and more forward-thinking decisions than people who are in a situation of hopelessness. So, I referenced our five outrageous outcomes. They're here on the slide, starting with our third graders reading on grade level and their language instruction. 100% of our students will pass algebra by the end of ninth grade. Some of our students pass it in seventh or eighth, but we want all of them to pass by the end of ninth. 100% of our students will be on track for graduation by the end of their ninth-grade year. 100% of our students will have, will graduate. But not only will they graduate, but they will have a path, a career path, and maybe even taking, having taken some steps within our system toward that career path. And then our newest goal, which is 100% of our students will experience meaningful connections and hope for their future. And again, that trajectory, starting in third grade and launching students beyond their high school graduation with a plan, is all fundamentally grounded in all students are capable of success, no exceptions. You, as a board, challenged me as a superintendent when we committed to the 100% goals that you were, you were fundamentally supportive of the idea of having these aspirational 100% goals as long as we created a framework for monitoring those goals from year to year to ensure that we're making growth toward the 100%. So, this slide represents our growth monitoring framework, where classroom teachers are using classroom-level data. As administrators, we're using some indicator data. As board members, you're watching some outrageous outcome benchmarks and growth goals. And if we leverage results, then that will funnel into the SA accountability system. So, what we didn't want to do is create a system that if the state changed, the metrics they were using for accountability, that we had to realign our whole system. So, our large triangle represented on this slide can stay consistent and sustainable even in the face of state-level change in their metric and accountability. And that was really important to us, that we were doing the work of the organization that would then lead to improvements in our SA accountability metric versus doing the work of the district and then having to come outside of that work to check off compliance for state-level accountability. So, having that seamless, that seamless cohesive system for monitoring that 100% was really important to you as a board and to us as a system. So, we have the outrageous outcomes. We have the growth monitoring framework. All of then, our improvement efforts are aligned to that. So, we have a district strategic improvement plan that's aligned to that. Our school improvement plans that are then are aligned to that. And then last year, we added in the state of the school reviews as a way for us as a superintendent and board team to go out and hear from our buildings and building-level leadership teams around how their efforts were going. And then it was really around our asking and offering support in helping them reach their goals. So, we got off to a great start with that. We did get interrupted because of the COVID closure and did not make it to every school. We almost made it to every school. But, but the, the, what you learned as a board, what I learned as a superintendent was all very positive. And the feedback we got from our systems, our school-level sites, was very positive. They would say, "Oh, we were really nervous. We didn't know what this was going to be about, but we're so glad you came. This was really beneficial." So, when we can start doing those again, I would anticipate that we'll, we'll start doing them again. They were of value to everyone who participated. We also have some system structures like this. It's a continuum of service delivery. And it calls out our need and our responsibility to identifying both academic, academic and social-emotional supports along a continuum. We recognize that the core instructional experience is in the middle, but we have a responsibility to intervene and extend on either side of that core curriculum. So, from the core curriculum and all the layers in between the core curriculum and our most restrictive or our most highly restrictive special education placements from the core and all the layers in between to our most rigorous courses of instruction, like our advanced classes at the middle school, our AP, college and the high school, running start. So, in between that core, there are layers of instructional experiences that need to happen for kids. And they, it needs to be able to be fluid and flexible. So, depending on the student, depending on the circumstance, that they would be able to move along that continuum to meet their needs in the moment. We also, in this organization, believe that language is an asset. You, as a board, unanimously voted and directed us as district staff to expand our two-way dual-language program and shift our late-exit program to a one-way dual-language program. And both of those philosophies and the focus on language acquisition was firmly rooted in our belief that language is an asset. 56% of our kids come to us already knowing another language, and many more students want to learn another language. So, we're building a system where any student who wants to begin the, the, the journey to bilingualism can start that in kindergarten and be supported K-12 in that effort. So, we do that through investing in bilingual staff and translation services. And it's really about language's power and these three pillars around bilingualism, bilinguality, high academic achievement, and then socio-cultural competence. So, how best to learn about, learn from each other, learn about each other, and learn empathy for one another than to learn each other's language? And again, that, the goal, that is the absolute fundamental goal of dual-language. And we're proud to be committed to that. We are now, I believe, at nine schools who are offering the two-way program. When we started this journey together, we had two. So, we've done a lot of heavy lifting. There's still work to do around how do we best meet the needs of all of our language learners in the midst of a pandemic? And that, you know, is a, is a, is a layer of complication and a layer of sophistication that we're adding in as we continue to be thoughtful about what is instruction mean in the face of this whole new world that we're experiencing. So, I'm going to take a deep breath for a second and ask the board, do you have any questions for me at this point? Is there anything I can... Hi, Lynn. I also just wanted to recognize Lynn Carlson is also on the call. I'll be turning it over to her and Naema in a few slides. So, any questions at this point from the board? Scott, Jessie, Sherry? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to keep going. Um, this graphic is probably not unfamiliar to you as a board. I think we've looked at it in the past together, and it's, 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 we've all seen it in, in various iterations over the course of, for example, in my professional career. So, it really represents this concept of equality is assuming that everyone benefits from the same supports. This is equal treatment. And then this evolution to equity, that everyone gets the support that they need. And then there's this journey into, and you can see in that, that graphic, that the fence is now eliminated to something that all three of the, the students there, the children there, can see the game without accommodation because the inequity in the system has been removed or addressed so that an accommodation is not needed. And all three of the, the children or people in the graphic can participate. So, this really represents a journey. And I think there's places where we, as a district, have, are here with equity. And there's places where we are here with inclusion. This is certainly the journey that we're on to where our efforts are really focusing on the systematic removal of barriers so that all of, all of our students, our families can participate without accommodation. And I think a clean or a clear example of that is some work the board did or started pre-COVID around the Voting Rights Act. So, I'm going to describe how I believe that's connected to the graphic. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Thornton to present the next couple of slides. But if you think about the idea of voting and everyone having the opportunity to vote, that's equality. But if you think about ensuring that everyone's vote counts the same or influences the process the same, or there isn't dilution in a certain group's vote, that really is inclusion. And I just, I wanted to point that out up against that graphic because I thought it was a really clean example for you as a board, where this work is really moving in the direction of inclusion by removing a barrier that is just inherently part of the, the way that our current school board elections are, are designed. So, with that, Sarah, I'm going to turn it over to you so that you can present the next couple of slides.
Well, and that was a great segue because that was exactly what I was wanting to point out for the board as well, is that the, the, the board has been working on, working with a focus on equity and inclusion in considering the Washington Voting Rights Act and the way that Pascal's current at-large election system functions. So, the Voting Rights Act is a new law in Washington over the last couple of years. And it helps protect against something called vote dilution, where protected-class voters in at-large elections systems may not have an equal opportunity to elect their candidates of choice. So, in this way, an at-large election system can be a barrier to those constituents. So, the Washington Voting Rights Act gives the district a mechanism to proactively change its election system and remove this barrier. So, as a board, you began considering this issue actually prior to enactment of the Washington Voting Rights Act. And then we brought it back to you again after the law was enacted. You directed me to engage outside council to explore the feasibility of changes to our system and potential challenges to the district. You then directed that we engage a demographer to make some determinations and find out some information around the percentage of protected-class voters in the district and their specific geographic locations. Next slide, please. And the preliminary evaluation by the demographer did show that it was possible for the, for the district to be divided into one or more single-member districts where protected-class voters would make up the majority of eligible voters in that district. So, we paused the work after the information came back from the demographer. We paused the work in the spring to deal with COVID. And now, we are scheduled with outside counsel John Safarli to come back to you, as Michelle said earlier. The, the timing is right to, to bring this work back to the board. He is scheduled to return and meet with you again at both meetings in October so we can, to help us conclude the work that, that you started back in 2018.
So, I'm going to, again, pause and ask the board if you have any questions about that part. Okay, seeing nobody making a move for the mute button, I will continue. So, I wanted to also highlight some district work. So, there, the, the voter's rights work and this district work that I'm describing, they're going to kind of happen simultaneously, and they, they are interwoven. We, we are committed to this idea of exploring our system through the lens of moving from, along this continuum, from equity to inclusion. And traditionally, when there's a need for change identified in large systems and public education is no different than any other large system, sometimes there's this model that looks like an urgent need for change is identified. And then this kind of top-down or hierarchical process is triggered. You know, a new initiative is identified. There's this top-down implementation, potentially a lack of buy-in. And because of that, then it moves into kind of this culture of blame and shame and can result in leadership turnover or an increased accountability with like, kind of hammer accountability, not like a hug accountability. And then that just deepens the cynicism around organizational change. So, people who know me know that I fundamentally resist like top-down. Like, I don't have an org chart that's top-down, and that drives people crazy, but it's for a very fundamental purpose. That our systems are designed that way. So, you have to be really thoughtful and intentional about not falling in... about not falling in into that 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 trap. And we're not perfect, and sometimes we do. And sometimes it's necessary, but often it isn't. So instead, we want to engage, especially in this work, in a liberatory approach to change. So a liberatory approach to change recognizes that there's an urgent need of a system. So in this particular arena, we're talking about the need for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we go out and we listen to the hopes, dreams, and challenges of the stakeholders. So you may be giggling because you're going to think that I wrote this slide, but I did not. I actually, the slide comes from the Center for, or the National Center for Equity. But it's language that you have heard us use in this organization, especially over the last four years. So we go out and we listen to the hopes, dreams, and challenges of our stakeholders. We support people in the organization to organize behind a shared vision. And that increases stakeholders' hope that, oh, they listen to us. We're going to get really focused on something that's going to be meaningful and beneficial to me. So now I have an increased sense of hope that things are going to change. Things are going to be different this time. So then we're able to folk on focus on bold achievable goals together. And it deepens the ownership of the change effort. And then we can celebrate our successes. And when you engage in this kind of a model, when you make a mistake, because we will, we, I mean, that's just, we're not, we're all fallible. It really then becomes an opportunity to learn and grow together versus a mechanism for criticism, cynicism, blame, and shame. So this is the approach that we, in this organization, have tried to use over time. It was confirmed in the research I was doing around how best to tackle this diversity, equity, and inclusion work together, that this model is right for us, and especially with the diversity and equity and inclusion work. So with that, when you are going out and listening in your own system, it is sometimes a value to have a partner who is not connected to the system or the work to help you with those efforts. So that's where Naima and Lynn are partnering with us. So I'm going to turn it over to Na- Naima. So she can introduce herself and and Lynn to and the work to you as a board. So Naima.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you Superintendent Whitney. So my name is Naima and I am the founder and CEO of the Tri-Cities Diversity Inclusion Council. And Gemini Corpse and Tri-Cities Diversity Inclusion Council has, or is, I'm sorry, working in collaboration to provide assessment, strategies, implementation, and evaluation for sustained transformational change at all organizational levels. So what does this look like? Diversity to reflect the communities that we live and work in. Inclusion as the actions that we take to make everyone feel validated, valued, respected, and seen. And then equity to ensure access to opportunities and well-being. And as you all have defined, as giving every student what they need. And cultural responsiveness to not only understand, but also communicate and interact effectively. Get the next slide, please.
Gotcha.
So the great thing about the way Naima and I work is we each bring a very unique and diverse skill set to our collaboration. We have an organizational development and participatory change approach that also leverages diversity, equity, and inclusion best practices. And what this helps our clients do is gain the knowledge and the skills to leverage diversity as a strength. They see inclusion as an employer advantage, and especially in a school district where students feel included. And also to leverage equity to provide service excellence to their clients and to their stakeholders. So specifically, we have a very multifaceted strategy. We incorporate leadership, skills training, quality improvement, cognitive restructuring. Naima, especially as a skill set in trauma-responsive practices, behavioral and behavioral intervention. So we very much take an approach of achieving positive change in our work. The reason that we are so excited about bringing this work to the school district is because everything that we've heard so far today aligns directly to your diversity, equity, and inclusion work. So we're really excited that it's so principal-centered and so so much part of the mission and the vision of the school district. So it's very exciting to be a part of this work.
And I want to take this opportunity to thank both Naima and Lynn, who I've had the extraordinary honor to spend time with. And then also, they've spent time with each of you as board members. And every time I meet with Naima and Lynn, I learn something. I feel like I'm a better superintendent, a better and a better person, having had the opportunity to spend time with both Naima and Lynn. So thank you both for who you are in our community and who you will be to us in this work. So thank you.
Thank you.
So Naima and Lynn are going to partner with us around this journey. And it will start with student voice. So we are going to kind of circle back from where we started. When I was very new in the superintendency, we did one focus group with my student advisory council at the time. And it was a fundamental, like profession changer for me. That the it grounded me as a superintendent in the power of our students' voice. If you ask them, they will tell you what they need from us in order to be successful. So we're going to kind of circle all the way back from where we started and start again with student voice. The goal is to engage our secondary students in focus groups. Remember I said before I did one and it was powerful? Well, we're certainly going to do more than one. We want to engage as many students as possible. Through the months of October through December, we'll work with our high school students. And then in January, we'll focus on our middle school students. In partnership with that student voice, the focus groups, where we ask them open-ended questions and dialogue with them around the things we need to do as an organization to be equitable, inclusive, and valuing of diversity. We will also then be spending time analyzing our healthy use survey data and the Center for Educational Effectiveness data. Again, the few snapshots I showed you tonight are just the a scratch of the surface of that data that is available to us where we can identify some trends beyond those that we can we can leverage in a focus group. So I can analyze some some data, some at Center for Educational Effectiveness data, and get a general sense for how 7,500 students feel and a deeper sense with some targeted focus groups where it may be hundreds of students. So utilizing both of those strategies, you get a broad representation of student voice, not only in a dialogue, but also in a survey. Through those two opportunities, we would surface themes to drive development of a springboard diversity, equity, and inclusion plan that we would then take through a process where we would bring in November, at your retreat in November, we would bring you kind of a progress report. Where are we to that point? What have we learned from our students to this point? What have we learned about through the data up to that point in November? Typically, your retreat is in in the latter part of November. I believe it's the 24th this year. So we'd be able to provide you an update or a progress, kind of a progress report where we are with what we're learning around diversity, equity, and inclusion from our students. And then also, you as a board would be able to engage with Lynn and Naima around some professional development around diversity, equity, and inclusion. At that point, we would be collecting some feedback and input, maybe some suggestions from you as a school board to help kind of make sure that we're on the right track in terms of your expectations of us in this work as a board. And then we would revise the work and moving forward based on your feedback in November. So we will do some work between now and November, bring you that work so that you can weigh in, do any course corrections that you feel like you need to do as a board. And then we're going to continue to move forward then to the next layer, which is some broader stakeholder engagement, which would include our staff, our families, and community at large. And that would occur then in December and January. We've also talked about the opportunities to do some more targeted surveying. The Center for Educational Effectiveness Survey and the Healthy Use Survey is of value. There's also value potentially in some internally-created survey opportunities should we identify the need for that. So that that could be a potential. Our goal is to bring you a final plan in January. So we would be able to be in front of you in January with a plan saying, here's all of the things we've learned from all of the people that we listen to. And here's some buckets of work that we believe need to be done over the course of time. This is going to be a marathon. It's not a sprint, it's a journey. And over the course of that journey, there'll be a variety of different types of work that will need to be done. There could be some policy work that needs to be done that you as a board will do. There'll definitely be training at all levels of the system that will need to happen. There could be some policy, existing policy review that needs to happen that could be tasked to district staff or community, ad hoc community groups, et cetera. And those are just three of the the potential buckets off the top of my head. But the certainly, this would be a multifaceted, multi-layered, comprehensive plan that would be long-range and 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 broad-reaching. So just for clarity, you have some work as a board to do around your Voters' Rights Act, Voting Rights Act work. And Sarah and your outside legal counsel and John Safarli will help shepherd that through. And then as a district, we have some work to do around surfacing a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan that is in alignment with the voice and needs, the voice and the needs as surfaced by those were in service to. And that will be a journey for us starting now. We've we've been working on it, but culminating by the end of of January with the presentation of a diversity first diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. So that is our plan. I do have to say, I I my I had November 24th as we're going to have the plan done by then. But based on feedback from people that I know and trust on the board, district staff and consultants, I was convinced that perhaps January was a better timeframe. So know that it's important work to me. We'll continue to drive those deadlines and make sure that we keep it at the forefront, even though the COVID situation and reopening schools in the face of of the COVID impacts is certainly complex. This is work worth and worthy of keeping on the forefront as well. So with that, I am going to open it up for discussion, questions, and direction from the board. Should the board have insights or awarenesses you would like to include and for us to use to influence our planning to this point? We would be open to that also. So I'll turn it over to you, Vice President Lincoln, to facilitate the board.
All right, does, is there anyone that has any questions or comments if they would like to bring forth at this time?
Well, I'd like to say that I'm very happy to see Lynn and Naima take lead on this. They're very awesome individuals. And and I know that they're going to do a good job for us in the district. So I'm excited in that case, and I'm excited about this plan going forward. So I'm excited to see what's happening in the future.
I have to say the same thing. I'm I'm looking forward to this. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the outcome is going to be. I think it'll be good. I'm not pessimistic, I'm just you know, we use the term equity a lot, especially when it comes to education. I think there are some things that we can do in our district, even in our community, to strengthen our community. And so I'm I'm hoping that this helps not just in education, but in our community in general as well. I think I think that's going to be critical going forward. We're at a place in our nation where we are very polarized. And I'm hoping that this can help us with some more understanding and take us to a better place, especially in our community. Because this is our home, this is where we live. So Lynn and Naima, looking forward to working with you and see what we can do.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And like my fellow board members said, I'm excited to see where Lynn and Naima can help take us on our equity, inclusion, and diversity journey and and growth as not only individuals, but as a community and district.
How about any of our students? Does any of our students want to say anything? Ask any questions?
I just have one comment, and I would just like to say that I'm super excited for this. And I think that we're going to see big change in the community around us. And I'm just really excited to be working with you guys.
I just want to add to what Brisa said. It's amazing to see all the work you guys are putting in to this project to ensure that we get the hope that we need to continue on with our school and with our career path. And I'm excited to be a part of the journey, too.
Yeah, I'm really excited to see all the students who kind of like join in in this and see exactly where this takes them.
I am happy to answer any other questions you have. Or otherwise, that concludes what I had for you this evening.
Well, it's a lot of work going forward and a lot of a lot of heavy lifting for everyone concerned. And I know that everyone will put forth the effort and be excited to see how it all turns out. So if no one else has any other questions, this concludes our study session. Thank you, everyone, for participating. And please join us for our 6:30 board meeting.
I just, one more time before we hang up, want to recognize and thank Naima and Lynn for their time this evening. And and we appreciate your commitment to this work with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it, and we're excited to be a part of this journey with you all. Thank you. All right, thank you, Sheri. Thank you.
So Amy, you got to a location?
I did, just barely. So I made it. Anyway.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Okay, we would like to call this meeting to order. Mrs. Richardson, can we have a roll call?
Sorry, I have an audio issue. Mr. Christensen. Sheri Lincoln.
Present.
Amy Phillips. Scott Lerman. Jesse Campos.
Present.
Brisa Hernandez.
Present.
Michelle Lynn.
Present.
Krista Martinez.
Present.
Thank you. Can, next item on the business is the minutes. Can we have, my mind went blank.
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September the 8th, 2020.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a move in a second to approve the minutes of September 8th, 2020. And Ms. Richardson, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Ms. Lincoln.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Lerman.
Yes.
Now we will move on to public comments. I'll turn the top, time over to Superintendent Whitney for that. Board President Phillips, I'm going to do a quick agenda review and then move on to audience comment if that's okay with you. We are, there are no additions or changes to the agenda and we are not requesting an executive session tonight. So. And then I will move on to public comment. I do have approximately 10 public comments to read. So Sarah Thornton is going to be doing the timing and I'm going to ask, request that Sarah make an to say something to me because I'm going to be looking at the paper. So I'm not going to be able to see you. So I'll, I'll read each of these. When two minutes comes, Sarah will let me know that I need to stop. So I am reading them in the order in which I received them. So. PSD Board Members and Superintendent Whitney, I first want to thank you for your service. You have all done a phenomenal job leading and guiding our district during a time of crisis. You've listened, you've asked tough questions and you've had the needs of all Pasco School District's children at the center of conversation. For that, I thank you. Today, I'm writing as an elementary teacher and an elementary mom. I can tell you firsthand how hard our teachers, students and parents and staff members are working during at-home learning. As a teacher slash mom, I have never worked so hard as I am now. Long hours, planning, recording, troubleshooting technology for it to change or stop working. I'm beyond exhausted, but I do it with a smile on my face and a love in my heart because that's what teachers do. Hearing the news this week from our local health officials about planning to go back to a blended hybrid model gave me the feels. I cried, I cheered, I prayed. The motto in our house is cross all fingers, toes and say all the prayers that we'll be back soon. Our children need to be back face to face, even just in a blended learning model. The social and emotional interaction with peers and staff members are lacking greatly. This need is far greater than the need for academics at this point. Now, don't get me wrong. I cannot wait to teach some fractions in person to my students. But above academics, I want to talk to my students in person. I want to talk and play with, I want them to talk and play with each other. I want our classroom community to be stronger than ever because we've overcome distance learning through a global pandemic. With that said, I'm a teacher slash mom supporting face-to-face learning. Please do not give up on us and our future leaders. I know you will do everything you can to bring us back. Thank you, Jenny Brown, McGee Elementary. Good afternoon. I would like to start by thanking you for all the time and work you've put into our children's, our children, given the years, this year's circumstances. As a parent, I would like to share my opinion on the current events. Unlike many others, we have had a very smooth ride with virtual learning, minimal issues and great teachers. This does not by any means, though, replace in-person education. Children learn so differently in person from teachers specialized in, to meet their needs versus us parents who are not trained to teach in most cases. Children also learn socially from their peers. My children personally are struggling emotionally. They miss their teachers, their friends and the ability to talk to each other. As a parent, I would like to see my children in school full-time without restrictions. There are ways to take safety precautions while still attending school full-time. Please consider our students and sending them back to school. And that is Kayla Jones. Hello, I absolutely believe my boys need to be in school face-to-face with their teachers and other students. Students need structure and certainly need more than two hours a day of live learning. Marie Mackey, please let our students go back to school. Dear Pasco School Board of Directors, I'm writing with questions and concerns about the possibility of kids returning to to in-person classes in October. I have a second grader at Mark Twain Elementary. I also have a husband with a chronic illness that makes him extremely high risk for COVID complications. I believe strongly it's too early to send kids back. As a family, we have had to quarantine because of exposure at work and financially it's devastating. We live paychecks to paychecks as I'm sure, if not the, I'm sure many, if not the majority of Pasco families do. And we've been financially hurt in this pandemic, again, as I'm sure many financial, many Pasco families have. Losing a quarter of our income for a month while you wait for COVID test results is hard to come back from when you're already on a tight budget. Doing it multiple times gets harder and harder as you fall further and further behind. Returning to school just before flu season makes no sense. Even with COVID safety measures in place, their families and teachers will get sick. We've seen that proven over and over in other areas that have kids in the building. Add flu season into the mix and every time a kid comes home with a cold or flu, the entire family will have to quarantine for a week, waiting for test results to make sure it's not COVID. People won't keep their kids home when they're sick. They'll still send them just as they always have and colds and flu will spread even with safety measures. Everyone who works has seen it at their jobs. People still come to work sick because they're sure it's not COVID. And soon more people at work are sick. It won't be any different with kids. You'll still have parents giving them Tylenol and cough syrup before school to hide cold and flu symptoms. And the class will have sick kids in them, just like always. Kids are horrible at social distancing and they'll need to take off masks to eat and drink. Returning right before flu season is horrible timing. In addition to get what? In addition to that, we've all started to get it with social, with distance learning. My son is learning a technology. Was that two minutes, Sarah?
Yes, it was.
Okay, that was Mike and Missy Corey. And the whole transcript is provided to the board so that you can read the remainder. Hello, will parents be given the opportunity to opt out of children returning to school? As a high school parent, I'm concerned the number of children will make it difficult to manage the sanitation and health of our students or our children. Has it been considered to start in phases for a trimester? And that is from Rita, sincerely Rita Elizondo. Hello, just checking for planning purposes. How and who will decide to organize groups A, A, B, B? Is it going to be by six foot distance classroom space between tables? Is it going to be by just half of the class without six foots distance in the classroom? Who will measure the classroom space to allocate student tables? If students get sick during the day and no one at home is able to pick up the student, what will be the precautions? Who and how is the temperature to be taken outside before school, before entering or afterwards? Is it going to be teachers who take temperatures? How that will look like? Would it take time from lessons? Can parents opt out and do asynchronous activities only? Or choose iPal and return to class when everyone is back to school or health conditions are better? Thank you, Martha. Martha Kessner is one of our teachers. Dear Board and Superintendent Whitney, I want to share my experience connecting with my students and families over the first few weeks of school as it relates to distance learning. I'm delighted to report that I had 100% connection and engagement from my students this past week. My elementary students are connecting every day at 8:00 AM and slightly before. Students are asking questions, engaging in discussion, turning in assignments and participating in our online classroom. We are finding our groove. While I know many students and staff are struggling with connection and the virtual environment, I want the board to know there are successes. I'm proud of my students and their families for showing up and continuing to show up. I would also like to address the issue of the Benton Franklin Health District announcement this past, past week. I'm protective of myself, my family, students and their families and my colleagues. I'm a strong advocate of opening schools for in-person instruction safely in response before all students and staff. I believe we need to be cautious in opening for in-person services to the full student population until the community spread is under control. Mrs. Persons' announcements seem ambiguous and premature. As of the writing of the letter, Franklin County has 111 cases, 114 cases per 100,000 reported over the past 14 days. And Benton County reports 164 cases. The metric calls for less than 75 cases per 100,000 consistently for 14 days. We have not had under 25 cases since April. Please consider using health and safety data as a basis for your decision and not emotional hype. As a single parent and sole provider for my family, your decision affects me not only in my professional capacity, but in an extremely personal way. I'm it. I can't afford to risk leaving my three minor children and one adult child without a fully present physically and emotionally whole parent. I appreciate the work Pasco School District has taken to protect students and staff in this still unprecedented time of teaching and learning. I volunteer my time this summer to participate in the reopening work groups. I took the training provided by Jeff UTEC to prepare myself for all the possible learning environments due to COVID. I share my experience and resources with my team and building and district colleagues. I understand many parents and staff are anxious to get back to normal. However, my primary concern continues to be the health, physical and emotional and safety of myself, my children, my students and their families and all my district colleagues. This is Susan Grace. She's also one of our teachers. She signs it, teacher educator and advocate. And again, the whole email is available for the board. Pasco School Board, thanks for the time you've put into serving our district. I know the weight on your shoulders is heavy as we move forward with making decisions that impact thousands of PSD community members, students, parents, teachers, admin and support staff. I'm a Pasco parent of an elementary student and I have a preschooler at home with me as well. I'm also a Pasco kindergarten teacher. As you can imagine, it's been an exhausting months in my household, but I'm not here to talk about me. I'm here to strongly advocate for students and their families. What I have seen develop over the past few weeks is both heartwarming and heartbreaking. I've seen teachers be excited to dance with our class during a Zoom meeting. There are quick to shout out, I love you, teacher. In their sweetest five-year-old voices. My students are hardworking and learning long after their morning Zoom sessions has ended. Some of my families have been doing great. This model works for their lifestyle and their child's personality. However, every day I feel more helpless that many of my students and families have been pinned into an unfair at-home learning situation. They've been, they have not been given a choice to do what they think is best for their children or family. They receive countless messages from parents trying to shovel troubleshoot technology so their child can participate in the daily activities. I responded to parents who are at their wits' end trying to juggle, working from home, caring for infants and toddlers, keeping their kindergarten engaged and on task, all at the same time. I've had phone conversations with parents who don't know how to motivate their child to keep them from getting frustrated because their teacher isn't there to help them. I have students who have never attended preschool who are trying to learn how to hold a pencil and cut their first piece of paper. Some are learning to practice English, yet they're muted for the majority of their live lessons. Kindergartners learn best by playing and through authentic learning experiences. There is nothing more playful. There is nothing playful or authentic about learning from a screen or watching a pre-recorded video of your teacher trying to show you how to form your letters. It is not okay. We are not okay. We are making the best of it, but the best of it isn't cutting it. Most precious young learners need to be back in the classroom. Distance learning is not, not working well for most families. Thank you so much for your time. Becky McPeak, kindergarten teacher, Maya or McGee Elementary. Again, you'll have the whole transcript for that that wasn't read in public. Um, I have a couple of questions regarding PSD1's potential action toward reopening schools. Will there be temperature screenings before entering school? How is creating a care area in schools protecting everyone from potential illness? What will be the group size if we go back to in-person instruction? Who will be responsible to measure the six foot distance in each class? Will the district purchase Plexiglas dividers for each classroom? How will we respond if there is COVID case in the classroom? Will the class be put in quarantine or the school? And that was Sandra Herrera Moreno. And our last one for tonight. Hello, Board, hello, members of the board. You are facing a difficult decision about reopening our schools. Currently, our highest need students are returning to campus. These students are often also medically fragile and in many cases, these students will have conditions that make them much more at risk for complications from COVID. These students, these are the students who cannot access distance learning at all due to their needs. They can only receive instruction in person and there's no viable alternative. For the majority of our students, distance learning is a viable alternative, even if it is not preferred or ideal. Bringing back more students increases the risk for our students who are most in need of in-person instruction and who often have the most medical needs for safety. I would not want general education students back in the building for hybrid or full-time. When doing so, risk will increase risk for our most vulnerable students who must be in person. Too many feel, too many, too many, this feels unfair, but it is just in the spirit of education. Thank you, Tiffany Chata, Longfellow Elementary, LLI, BIS teacher. That concludes public comment. Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate all the feedback from our community as well. I'm sure we, we are grateful to hear from our community. We will move on now to the consent agenda. We have personnel warrants and monthly budget report. I would entertain a motion.
Approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Richardson, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Ms. Lincoln.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Lerman.
Thank you. We will, there. Thanks, Scott. Um, we, there are no action items this evening, so we will move on to reports. Our first report is on the COVID health condition report. And that will be given by, and this is Michelle Whitney. Thank you, Board President Phillips, members of the board. I did want to also acknowledge I have Dr. Persons from Ben Franklin Health District here with me tonight. And I will go over the first part of our presentation, then hand it over to Dr. And I will go over the first part of our presentation, then hand it over to Dr. Persons so that she can talk about her, the new recommendation from the Health Department and then offer some opportunities for the Board to ask some questions about that. And then we'll move on to part two of the presentation, which would be a brief overview of the current framework for our blended learning model. And then also give the Board an opportunity to give us some input and feedback. So our presentation tonight will be divided into a couple of different parts to allow for some efficiency in use of Dr. Person's time. So, um, so again, like I said, the purpose is to share the new recommendation of the Benton Franklin Health Department and then also revisit the framework for the blended learning approach that you as a Board approved as part of our reopening plan on August 11th. And then we also want to ask the Board for some feedback on the blended learning approach based on our experience from the first few weeks of school, provide you an opportunity to give us any insights or feedbacks that you're hearing from those that we're in service to. We will not tonight be requesting Board action as it applies to the new recommendation from Benton Franklin Health District. And we're not going to be requesting approval for the blended learning approach as the framework has already been approved by the Board, which allows us to begin bargaining the impacts of blended learning with our labor partners. So this is not a new graphic to you. It represents our instructional continuum from most restrictive to least restrictive. Most restrictive is our at-home learning and the least restrictive is traditional face-to-face instruction. And our blended learning model is somewhere in the middle. And where we land on that continuum is defined by our community health condition. So this dial represents the Washington Department of Health's metric for moving from that most restricted to the least restrictive environment. So at-home learning is to be implemented when there's more than 75 cases per 100,000 over 14 days. That's currently what we're doing. Our recommendation does allow for us to bring small or small groups of students, five or fewer, who are termed educationally at risk onto our campuses. The, and we could move to a blended learning model when our cases are between 25 and 75 or we're in a moderate area on our dial. Recently, the Benton Franklin Health Department released a recommendation and Dr. Person, I have provided a couple of slides for you. Dr. Person, one represents your, your recommendation, should that be helpful to you? And the other represents the data slide. So just by way of introducing the recommendation, Dr. Person or the Benton Franklin Health District released a recommendation that was based on some preliminary data analysis. And again, I'll let Dr. Person talk about that data analysis that says that Pasco School District could see if the preliminary data holds, that it could see data that would allow us to implement in-person or a hybrid learning model as early as October 15th. So, Dr. Person, if you'd like to talk to us a little bit about your recommendation, and like I said, on the secondary slide, I do have the chart. Should that be, should that be helpful to you or supportive?
All right. Thank you very much for this opportunity to provide more information and hopefully more insight into the process by which I changed the, or updated the recommendation. Managing return of students to school is probably the biggest challenge that I think anyone in public health or education obviously is facing these days. And because we're dealing with a novel virus and a novel pandemic, we unfortunately don't have a lot of previous experience to rely on for those decisions. We do have the advantage that new information continues to come out on an, if not daily, weekly basis. And because schools have been a high-interest area across the country, we are seeing information coming from multiple sources that is allowing us to see more and have more understanding of how schools have opened or the decisions that have been made across the, the country. When Washington State originally set their 75 case per 100,000 over 14-day metric, it was based on the available research at that time, which showed that states that have very high levels and were not using any mitigation. For example, we're not requiring students to be masked. We're not using physical distancing. We're not going to be successful bringing kids back to the classroom. And that was the experience in southeastern United States. We also know that when disease rates are very low, returning kids to school does not present any problems. We live in a, this gray area, which is our rates are no longer 5, 6, 7, 800 cases per 100,000 over 14 days. But they're not 25 cases per 100,000 per 14 days. So we're really looking at how do we balance considerations for all aspects of health, of our community, of our children and of our adults as well. And that means looking at that balance between the risk from communicable disease balanced against the risk from loss of educational, social, mental health supports that so many schools provide to students besides education. When analyzing the data, one of the advantages that we have or that all health districts potentially have at the local level is that we do have access to the same data that the state is using to determine their cases per 100,000 over a 14-day period. They're basing this on when specimens were collected. I know this has created some confusion when people try to use our local dashboards to do their own calculations because the local dashboard is based on when cases are reported to us. So those numbers won't match. And in fact, those numbers may change every day. The advantage of being local means that I only need to look at cases from Benton and Franklin counties. I don't need to look at cases across 39 counties to ensure that I am getting 90% of the data completeness. The state, because it does have to look at all 39 counties and deal with quite a few more labs than we do locally, needs to delay posting data for 10 or 11 days in order to achieve that completeness. At the local level, we can look at data within a six-day period and still have that same 90% accuracy. In Benton and Franklin Counties, because our disease activity is dropping because our case counts are going down, I have the advantage of knowing that our numbers are getting better even than what is posted at the state level. Granted, we have not yet achieved that 75 cases per 100,000 over 14-day period in Franklin County yet. But I'm confident we are headed in that direction. The beginning of July, Franklin County was at its peak. 901, I believe, is the highest number I saw, cases per 100,000 over 14-day period. The most recent data that I have, which is data within the six days, has Franklin County at 136 cases per 100,000 over 14-day period. That means in a two and a half month period, we've dropped by over four times. Continuing at that pace, we are on target to be at that 75 cases per 100,000 over 14 days. So people have asked, why didn't I wait until we actually were at that number? To make any new recommendations? And that reasoning comes from, I believe that practically speaking, if we do want to see more children in school, we're going to need to do it at a point that is either before flu season starts or waiting until after flu season. I think that if we try to start a blended model in the winter time or after flu season starts, I don't think it will be successful. I think there will be too many challenges with trying to do a new system because hybrid learning model is a new system for all of us. So trying to implement that at a time when there is a lot of other illnesses in the, in the community, I think is not a recipe for success. So that really means looking at either moving forward in the fall or waiting until spring. If our case counts were still in the 400 and 500 cases per 100,000 over 14-day period, my decision would have been clear. We'll just need to wait until spring. We have too much disease in the community now to even consider it. But having witnessed the improvements in our community gives me hope that we are headed in that right place. We know we likely will see cases of COVID in school because we already see cases of COVID in children and we already see cases of COVID in people who list their occupation as teachers. So COVID is everywhere in our community. Our decision about, from a public health standpoint about, do we consider bringing kids back into the school is what is the likelihood? We think that there will be sustained transmission outbreaks propagated throughout the school. Over these first few weeks of the new school year, we've also had the advantage of looking at what's happened in our private schools. Because they're private schools, they were not bound by the frameworks and decisions that the public schools need to follow. And private schools so far have been very successful. We have not had any outbreaks associated with the private schools. Granted, they do have the advantage that their, their numbers are smaller, so it's a, a smaller population. But again, it shows us that with proper protocols in place, children and teachers can be interacting in an in-person environment without automatically causing COVID-19 cases to occur. So that's why we proceeded to, to make this recommendation. It's not, at least I know from many of the emails and questions we get at the, the Health District. This is not an order to schools that you have to do hybrid learning. What it is saying is that the improvements in COVID-19 disease activity in our community do support allowing more interactions, which includes consideration for hybrid learning model in schools. The Washington metric is a very conservative one. There are, as I've said, we're seeing more interest in analysis of what is being done across the country as far as decisions around schools and assessments of COVID-19 disease risk activity. Harvard Global Institute has actually been analyzing this at a county level across the United States. And a month ago, both Benton and Franklin Counties were in the red, which they consider, again, very high-risk, only consider in-person learning. Benton County has actually dropped now two levels down to yellow. Franklin County is at orange. Those risk levels for both counties, again, do support consideration for blended learning models, ensuring that all of the COVID-19 safety precautions that have been outlined in the guidance from the Department of Health and OSPI are being met. And I think I will stop there because I feel like that was a lot of stuff for people to try to think about. And I do, do want there to be opportunities for questions or to try to clarify or explain better any of the information I've provided.
Sorry. Board President Phillips, I'll hand it back to you to facilitate questions and discussion for Dr. Person.
Thank you, Dr. Persons. I, I took a lot of notes on your presentation. That was very interesting. So I appreciate you coming and explaining some of those things to us. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board?
I've got a comment. Sorry, Scott. So just Dr. Person, I think, I think your position is a lot like a school board member. Most of the time, people don't know who you are. They don't care who you are. But there are times when they really love you or they really hate you, depending on the decisions that you So we feel for you. Thank you for the work that you do. I know, I, I believe that you are trying to keep us safe. And I think we all need to take that into account. I, I think, I think the things that you said make a lot of sense. I mean, our trajectory is headed down and we can't wait till we get there to finally make a decision. That doesn't mean that it can't change and change quickly. But, but I think I worry about some of the things that you said, like flu season's coming up. We've really been sheltered for several months now. And so I'm guessing that immune systems are somewhat weakened right now. And even when we start back, I, my suspicion is that we're going to see some increase in other infections and so forth. So I believe the sooner we can get started, even if it's in a hybrid model, that, that it will be better for us to start now rather than wait till, wait till later and waiting till spring really concerns me. But anyway, thank you for your work and thank you for coming and sharing that information with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Person. I, I have a question. I don't know exactly. I have a high-level understanding of what the hybrid model's going to look like. But a question I would have is if we have close to 20,000 students and you heard, I guess, the comments that we have, it's, who knows if it's 50/50 on parents that want their kids in school right now? Parents that are no way, no how, am I going to send my kid back until there's a vaccine? Or if it's 30/70? We don't know what that looks like right now. I think maybe we'll get some surveys on that hopefully in the, in the near future. But I had a question. If, if hybrid learning comes up and we're bringing, say, 8,000 students into our schools per day, a little less than maybe half of our student body, is it more difficult bringing 8,000 students one day and a different 8,000 students the next day? Or is it equally difficult if we were to, to take a poll of parents and allow more choice? And those who want their students in all the time to bring in a single group of 8,000 and then slowly ramp that up? Is there any more difficulties in having double the amount of people? Is there any more difficulties in having double the amount of people and tracking? Or do we just do social distancing and cleanliness each day? And if we bring in a whole new group, there's no additional challenges? What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I'll just speak to the the public health piece of it because I, yeah, I think there's logistics probably around the education or even how do you, you know, where can you space the kids and and do that? From from the public health standpoint, I think the key is to minimize how I'll say, how many different networks everybody is in? So kids that we've decided, you know, are coming on this day or whatever day, those groups, we're keeping the same because that's where we see the benefit. And from a public health standpoint is that the more we have people intermingling. So, you know, some days people are an A and some days they're a B or that kind of a model isn't going to work from a public health standpoint. But from from a tracking standpoint, we're tracking everybody in in terms of trying to identify, you know, is somebody have COVID, you know, who are their close contacts? So whether we're tracking them because they're a student who's in a classroom or whether we're tracking them because they were positive because their parents went to work and where they worked, they they became positive. I think we'll be seeing, it'll it'll be a more of a challenge for public health. I think just helping, again, schools when they initiate, having more students in there, dealing with the questions. You know, he has a runny nose, but he's got allergies. Does he, you know, is he sick or is he not sick? She's, somebody at her house was exposed to somebody with COVID. Do I have to, you know, does she need to be quarantined? I mean, I think there are going to be a lot of those kind of questions, which will will be a challenge for us in public health. I don't know if it's dose dependent so that if it's, you know, four thousand students or twelve thousand students, we have three times the many questions.
So you wanna, I think what I heard you say, you want to keep, whatever we choose to do, you want to kind of keep your cohorts together and not mingle them over different days if you can?
Yes, because that makes it easier. If we know, you know, Johnny is always with this set group of people. So if Johnny gets COVID, then it's much easier to think about who who do we have to think about quarantining? If it's if Johnny has been, you know, a bunch of different places in school with a bunch of different groups, then then I think that's where you get the challenges of, you know, kids are in school, kids are out of school because they continue to be identified as a close contact. So I think really controlling that. And again, the more that we keep those measures in place, the using the masks, the distancing, keeping people home when they're sick, those are all going to reduce the likelihood that even if there is a case in a classroom or in a school doesn't automatically mean that everything has to get closed.
When you say a cohort, or I guess I use the word cohort, but a group, would that be the entire population at the school that day? So using a high school as an example, if we were to bring a thousand kids into the high school in a day and I must confess what we're gonna do, I don't know what the number is. But would it be that you don't want to cross pollinate those thousand kids with the thousand kids that are coming the next day? Or is it that we want to try and keep a classroom of twenty-some students? And I know that that's logistic maybe impossible at the upper grade levels into groups of twenty. What what would be the groupings that you're talking about an entire school body?
It would be more the latter. We would actually be looking for even for those students there in a day to, again, try to limit that intermingling as much as possible. I think that's where there are more challenges with trying to think about how to bring back older kids versus the elementary kids. Because you do want to look at how do we, yeah, keep that group of kids the the same, whether it's the twenty or the twenty-five versus the or thirty, just something less than that thousand would be where you'd be trying to, yeah, where you'd be trying to go. Yeah. And so is that having the teachers move around versus the students? Is one way that people have have looked at at dealing with that. But I do think that is one of the added challenges with the high school age. That doesn't mean that it can't be done. But again, we are really trying to keep that, again, that cohort, that that grouping as small as is logistically possible. And again, that's because it makes it less disruptive. If one of that group does end up with COVID and we need to look at who needs to be quarantined, we don't have to look at a thousand kids every time we're talking about doing that.
And I'd love one last question for you. The decision that I know you say you made the decision or the the guidance changed there. There's other districts, it appears, or other communities that their health experts have made similar type recommendations. What, do you have a feeling for around the state? What percent of communities or districts are in the same situation as we are? Where the health officials are saying, maybe we should open up, you know, now before flu season starts in the next month, month and a half? Do you have a feeling statewide what that looks like?
Not at this moment. I I do know it has shifted. The end of August or because I'm on weekly calls with the the other health officers and the the state health officer, everybody really was in that focus on distance mode until the numbers are much, much lower. But as we've seen sort of gradual improvement in most places around the state, I think there's a few counties that that still have some issues. I am hearing that more people are talking about, more health officers are talking about, if we do want to try to do this, doing it now is probably the best point. Otherwise, because nobody wants to do it or look at doing it in the winter, even if that's when our numbers started to go down. Because I think we, everybody is really worried about how do you put a new process in place in the middle of a COVID and flu season?
Thank you.
I have a few questions. These might be better answered by Superintendent Whitney. We've heard in our communications earlier this this evening and in communications to the board, a lot of questions about protocols, a lot of questions about screening protocols, a lot of questions about how we are going to enforce those protocols. I know we have some of those in place because we were planning on opening with a hybrid model. But I know it would also be beneficial to our community to to know what those protocols are. Do you know when those will be done so that we can, so that we can publish those to relieve some of the anxiety in our community?
So part of that will be, some of those questions may get answered in the second half of this presentation. And then also just to remind the board that we brought back some small groups of students yesterday for the first time. So we are not only, we don't, we didn't only develop the protocols. We're actually implementing the protocols and we've already learned how we might do them more efficiently. So we can make modifications to the protocols. And I think that's part of this next phase is being even more public with with the protocols as we're continuing to bring back small groups of students and preparing for pivoting to blended learning at such time as the metric says that our community health data supports that. So my, like I said, the second half of my presentation may answer some of those questions. But certainly, we always need to do a better job in communicating with our community and we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be great. And I think we will probably will learn a lot and from the communities that have already opened schools already to know what, how to do it more easily and more efficiently. And the other question I have is about our at-risk students and our at-risk teachers. I think that's another thing our community would love to hear that that we are going to have provisions for those teachers and students that that might not be, their health might not make it so that they can go back to school. And those, can you explain any of that?
So the provision for staff accommodation based on health issues is not a new provision. That's a provision that as a public school system, any entity has a process in place when a person has a health condition that impacts their ability to do the essential functions of their job. There's an accommodation process for that. Now, that process in the midst of COVID, the volume of people who who need to take advantage of that process has has increased. But the protocol itself is not new. And, you know, as we go to a blended learning environment, we would need to interface with our employees to ensure that those that need accommodation have the opportunity to request it. And again, we've been practicing those protocols over the summer and into the fall with small groups of people as we've, for example, integrated the, our first group of students that was served yesterday. There was a whole employee interface process that happened in advance of that to ensure that every employee that needed to be onsite delivering those services had the opportunity to request accommodation. So I think it's important, I don't know, I'm gonna remind the board, it's been, feels like years ago, but I think it was just like in July, that I talked to you about one of the biggest learnings that I had was from a friend of mine who works outside of education, but for a large employer, who talked about spinning up your protocols slowly, that you didn't, you don't bring back all eighteen hundred employees all at once. So that's also the benefit of the work that we're doing to layer in our small groups as we're planning for pivoting to blended learning at the right time is we're getting to learn what's working really well with our protocols and what 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 we need to tweak or change. In terms of students who need accommodations, you know, that's also on a range. So some of our students need accommodation based on a health issue or a special part of their IEP process. That's a different accommodation protocol than our families who don't have a IEP or five oh four, but are just wanting to opt into an at-home learning environment for a longer period of time than maybe what the whole school system. Like we may pivot to something different and parents may want to keep their kids home. I think that's a more complicated question and one that we know we need to answer and we need to do that in partnership with our our labor unions. So we're working on and on answering that question right now. And that's part of, I heard Scott reference a survey opportunity. I would envision that as a system, we would need to survey our our employees who can come back and then our parents who was planning to come back and doing some pretty detailed planning around that. So it's the the pivot to blended learning isn't only making sense of the instructional framework. There's a human element to it, both in our employee needs and our students and family needs that we're going to need to really dig into. So it it's going to be a complicated and a multi-layered process, but certainly we're up for the challenge.
So my last question, thank you for that. I appreciate that. That's what I wanted to hear. We will. And so I hope the community realizes that we will make accommodations. And that's what I heard you say, that we will have accommodations and that we will address those needs. And I also love the idea of a survey, so I think that will be great. My last one is we've lowered because of what we've seen in the community, because of the upcoming flu season, because of several things that we're not going to hit that, probably not going to hit that seventy-five mark. But we feel that it's safe to come back to in small groups before that happens. Do we anticipate that happening also with the twenty-five in fourteen days? The twenty-five COVID cases or less in fourteen days? So this is probably for Dr. Persons. Do you anticipate that changing a little bit as we've seen more positive results with kids going back to school that are following protocols?
I think if we we do see that as we can bring kids back, we don't see spikes, we don't see outbreaks, we should be building on that, you know. Again, these metrics were designed based on, you know, the limited information that was available at that time for where to kind of draw those lines. But I could, I could see those changing. I could see things changing as we actually see what happens. You know, we went through a a similar process back in, gosh, yeah, it seems like ages ago, but I believe it was the beginning of the summer when as a health district, we actually supported the, you know, recommendation that both our counties wanted to, you know, apply to move to phase two, even though, I mean, at that time, our our numbers were so far away from the the twenty-five that we were supposed to have to be able to reopen businesses. But we've demonstrated in this time that we actually were able to reopen things and our numbers kept going down because we got behavior change in the community. We got enough of that culture shift that enough people were wearing masks, enough people were distancing, were following the protocols that even though we have that vocal minority that doesn't always do that, that we could progress forward, even though the, you know, the numbers said that we shouldn't have been successful. So I don't see any reason why that wouldn't occur with schools too. But I think we need to see what happens. Because there, you know, there, there isn't that crystal ball and and there isn't, again, lots of evidence to say, yes, if your, you know, case count is here and you do this, this is what's going to happen. We know that for measles, we know that for flu, we know that for a lot of other things that have been around for a longer time. COVID nineteen isn't like that. But that's why a lot of these decisions are, I mean, some are at the state level, but they're also local decisions because we should take what we learn from what happens in our community as we as we do things, as we move forward. If we can be successful, then we should look at what more can we do to help as many kids as we can so that they're all going to be successful in their education?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Persons. Is there any other comments from the board or from our student representatives? We would love to hear with, from you and your opinion and all things going on.
Dr. Pearson, hi, this is Jesse Campos. Thank you for your best in time to be here with us tonight. My concern is that knowing our population in Pasco, we live in multi, multifamily situations. So the multifamilies live in the same house. If if, say, for instance, I know we're not, we're not at the target rate yet, but you're forecasting that we will be. But what would happen if one of the students that could be a carrier go back to a multifamily situation? And then perhaps infect the multifamilies? And then we we see an increase of that? What would be your recommendation on that standpoint? And do you see that? And I know that Superintendent Whitney said that we're going to flow and and whatever need is possible there, that we're gonna help the need as we go. I'm kind of, you know, safety i- is 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 my, my concern and knowing our our demographic and families and teachers. That is my greatest fear, is is that happening? And having so, a lot of families have grandparents, all the generations living with them. So that's my greatest fear, is that happening and and that those elderly folks are most vulnerable will be infected? What's your recommendation on that?
Right, and and I think this is the, you know, the question that we're, we're all asking. Right, and, and I think this is the, you know, the question that we're, we're all asking. This point, what we do know and what it does appear to show is that one, while kids can get infected with COVID, they still seem to be much less likely to, to transmit it to others, which is why we're having this, this conversation. Honestly, if, if COVID nineteen, if we knew it was like influenza, uh, where we knew that schools uh were kind of our biggest risk pool for spreading disease through a community, we wouldn't be having any discussions about how, how do we move forward with, with opening schools. But we don't know that wi- with COVID. And the other way I would challenge that too is that even if kids aren't in school, that's not a guarantee kids aren't gonna get infected. I mean, we're, we're already have seen that in some instances. It's usually kids getting infected by their parents and, and not the other way around. We haven't yet seen kids infecting their parents, but that, that doesn't mean it won't happen, so we will be continuing to assess that risk. But that's really part of the balance that makes it both the challenge and the opportunity is that we can look at bringing kids back into school because we know that they're not the driving force for how infection is spreading in our community. Infection, you know, has spread and for a variety of other reasons, because it's again, widespread in our community, fortunately going down. So what we're really trying to look at is how will that change if we do have kids back in school? We know it'll change some way because that's a lot of kids, you know, uh, over time, spending time with one another. But based on the evidence up to this point, it doesn't look to change the risk to an individual family as much. But I think those are the decisions families will be making and that hopefully, you know, and from the, what I heard Superintendent Whitney say, that there will be those opportunities if a family doesn't feel like that's a, a risk that they want to take. Because this is something we're gonna have to balance. I mean, we're, when I'm trying to think about the health, I am thinking about the immediate health needs of the community in terms of who's potentially exposed to COVID nineteen or who may get it and who's at risk. But I also have to think about the health of the community in terms of what are kids or families losing when kids can't be in school? And we will have to find that balance. And, and unfortunately, I think there's no one answer that where we can get kids in school with no more educational losses, because the, the more we say there has to be no COVID nineteen in our community, the longer we're gonna talk about kids not being in school. The sooner we get kids back in school, you know, particularly if we thought about doing it when disease rates were high, then we knew that was gonna come with, with additional risks, so. I, I don't know what the answer will be, but it is something we will continue to watch and will continue to, if we have to shift because we're seeing something we're, we're not expecting. We will, uh, but even again, if kids are not in school, uh, we will still see COVID nineteen cases in children. And there will still be the potential that they can pass that to their family members, no matter whether they got it from school or, or from visiting a friend or from going to the store.
I think it's a um, interesting thing, e- e- like Mr. Campos said, each family's health needs are different, just like each family's educational needs are different. And in all those emails that we've been getting from people, Ms. Whitney read ten of them before the meeting, you can see that it runs a spectrum. And so I hope that on this slide you have here, when there's draft train, training for blended learning, I hope that if we get, if we end up getting um data that shows us what percent of people wanna stay home and what percent of people wanna be in class full-time, we can accommodate as many of those desires as parents have, you know, if, if half the people wanna go back full-time and we can get them in full-time and the other half uh don't wanna come in at all until there's a vaccine, we can meet them. Hopefully we have flexibility in this blended learning model and it's not a straight, you know, here's a A-track and here's a B-track, you're coming on Monday, Wednesday and you're coming on Tuesday, Friday. Hopefully there is some flexibility allowed in there based on um the needs of our uh different community members and um what we can provide. That, that's what I hope that we eventually see there. It, it reminded me, you know, earlier, no, in our study session, we talked about equity and then we talked about inclusion. You know, giving each student what each student needs. And this seems like part of it, blended learning model, it doesn't feel like it's only one way or the other unless we're impacted by the restrictions of these, of, of COVID requirements here. But if we can provide those options, um, I think we'd be a leader, uh, not only in our area, but in the state by providing options through the blended learning model.
So if there's no other questions for Dr. Person, I'd be happy to move on with next steps here and move into the discussion about the model as it was approved by the board in our reopening plan. I'll defer to you, Mrs. Phillips.
Yes, can, please, please continue with the next item on the agenda. Okay, just wanna thank her.
Well, I've had a couple of questions that, that, that this discussion's brought up. So, Dr. Person, I, I appreciate your comments where you, uh, it's all right, Amy.
Oh, yes, you're fine.
I appreciate your comments and your concern about what are, what are students losing when they're not in school? This, this isn't just about COVID. I, I think, I hope we can all appreciate that comment. I've heard you say that a couple of times tonight and I appreciate that. So I have a couple of questions and, and some suggestions. I'm not sure exactly how to order them, but I'm going to, uh, I think I heard you say that in general, kids aren't spreaders of this disease. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't, but, but the probability is low that they are spreaders. I, I don't know how to say that, but how would you phrase that?
Uh, you know, I, I think that that's probably a, a pretty good way to, to, to phrase that. I, I will raise the one, the one caveat is that, because other people have raised this, is this because we haven't, at least in this country, haven't had a lot of kids i- in school, which is usually their, their biggest pool for, for mixing. But we do know in families, the research that's out there says that it's parents who give it to kids and not kids who give it to parents. So, you know, in, in the public health lingo, we'd say kids are not the vectors, but that kinda makes them sound like a physics project, so I don't, I don't wanna say that. But I, I think it would be uh your characterization that at this point, kids don't look to be the, the spreaders.
So, uh, thank you. I am not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to understand. And I think it's important that our community understands that as well. Uh, but, but it sounds to me like in general, kids are not spreaders. That doesn't mean that they can't, but it's unlikely, the probability is low that they're spreaders of this disease. My second question is what, so for kids who do get it, are they generally asymptomatic, mild symptoms? What kind of symptoms can we see in kids that we should be watching for?
Kids appear to be pretty similar to adults, which, which means that it, it runs the gamut, A to Z. So ki- kids can be asymptomatic. I think our, our largest percentage are gonna be probably asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic. Uh, the one thing we don't know yet is how many kids are asymptomatic who have it because most of the testing that's been done in kids is usually if they've been exposed because they're close contact to their parent or they have symptoms. So we haven't done as much generalized testing in kids uh as we have in adults. And that I think is because kids haven't been in school, so there haven't really been as many opportunities for, or people saying, well, I should get, I wanna get my child tested because I think he was exposed or they may have it. So the asymptomatic percentage is probably higher than we realize, but that we don't know. Vast majority of kids are asymptomatic. Some kids can get more seriously ill with it. It appears to be the same as the adults who get more seriously ill, and those are the ones with underlying conditions. The, the challenge is that underlying conditions can include things like obesity or, or diabetes or asthma, so it, it doesn't mean, you know, cancer or, or a life-threatening kind of chronic illness. So it is still something we need to take seriously. That the percentages that end up in hospitals, uh, based on national data is anywhere from uh point one to three or four percent. So a, a small number that end up in the hospital, the ones that do end up in hospitals can have more serious complications. So a third of them will end up in the ICU. So again, uh, you know, I think it is something we need to take seriously, but we also need to recognize that the, the vast majority of kids who do get it so far have not had serious complications with it. There is a small minority that will, but the vast majority won't. And at this point, they do not look to be the major way that this disease spreads through a community. But that may be influenced by the fact that they haven't been in school since the springtime. So is that enough, you know, maybes and could be or could not be, but that's really the, the best way I can kind of explain the evidence that we have so far and recognizing that there is still a lot that we are learning about COVID and that we will continue to learn over the next days, weeks, months.
And is this, uh, so in general, well, I guess not in general, so are, are people, I, I know initially it was thought, and this may still be the case, that people were contagious or were able to spread the disease before they had symptoms. Does that still, does that still apply? Is that still accurate?
Yes, people can spread uh infection forty-eight, up to two days before they become symptomatic. You're most likely to spread infection uh during the first four to five days that you're symptomatic. So it's possible to spread infection before you're sick, but it appears that you're most likely to spread it while you're sick.
So it seems to me, and I, I think this is, I, I think this is key, that if you have symptoms, then it, what, uh, I mean, if you're sick, whether you're a student, a teacher, a parent, if you're sick, stay home. Uh, they will just save a lot of headache for everybody, even whether it's work, going to the store, um, uh, going to school in this case, if you're sick, if you're feeling sick, stay home. Because if you get sick and you get somebody else sick, that's, that's not good. But in the case of COVID, if you have symptoms and we end up quarantining a bunch of people because you either chose to send your kid to school or you came to school sick, that just, that just makes it worse. So I, I, it meant if we could do anything, if you're sick, stay home. If you have a cough, you're feeling rundown, stay home. We, we, I think it would be easier for us to help you catch up than to try and uh deal with a bunch of sick people. So man, if I could say anything, if you're not well, please stay home. Um, now, I understand people have allergies and that's different. If you know you have allergies or you know your kid has allergies, please let us know in advance so that we can make the accommodations for that. But boy, it seems to me like the best thing you can do, if you're not well, stay home, take care of yourself where you are.
Couldn't sit up by myself.
That's all I have, Amy. Thank you, Dr. Person.
So, Mrs. Whitney, you still have more of this report, is that correct? Okay, let's continue with this.
And another one to, and another one to follow this one.
All right. Thank you.
So just to kind of um come full circle on what we've talked about in terms of the new recommendation from Ben Franklin Health District. Again, thank you to Ms. Dr. Person for being here. So district staff will continue to focus our efforts on a couple of different things simultaneously. One, where we will continue to su- support educationally at-risk students onsite. We just started our first group yesterday. We have a plan to layer in um additional small groups over the course of the coming weeks, really kind of a groups every week. Um, I'll give you a little more detail on that in the subsequent slide. We also are planning for implementation of blended learning that that includes collaboration with our labor partners around the framework that was developed over the summer in collaboration with hundreds of stakeholders and based on thousands of survey responses. There was a framework for blended learning that was developed and right now we are working on collaborating with labor partners around that. Um, it's, doesn't mean that we can't make modifications to what the work that was done over the summer based on the things that we've learned so far, um, and make that framework even better based on the knowledge that we have now. We are, we have been engaged in training with Jeff Utech, who is our, our expert on virtual learning. He provided training in August for all of our teachers. We've had um optional trainings on Wednesdays. Since school has started, we've had hundreds of, of uh teachers engage in those trainings. Um, I heard one number was like six hundred and fifty teachers logged in to participate on a Wednesday. Um, we will continue our relationship with Jeff Utech throughout the year. In the, the, the near future, on October seventh and fourteenth, those two sessions are going to be focused specifically on blended learning. So the idea is to start being proactive with training around blended learning, not waiting until the day that we've decided that we're pivoting there, but be proactive with our teachers in, in that training. So I wanna be clear, these two dates are not the only date with dates with Jeff Utech. We have many dates coming up with Jeff Utech. These two specifically will be focused on blended learning. We also, and I'll cover this in future agenda items, but I'll mention it here. We also um are gonna reach out to Jeff Utech to see if there could potentially be a time when he could come and do a little staff or a board workshop with you so that he could talk to you directly about um his work with our teachers. And then next steps as specific to the recommendation on the twenty-fifth of August, you directed me as the superintendent to provide updates about the public health conditions at each of our regularly scheduled meetings. So I'm prepared to continue acting on that direction. When the local data meets the Washington State Health Benchmark of twenty-five to seventy-five cases per hundred thousand, the district will transition to that blended learning model that we're preparing to in alignment with our collective bargaining agreements. So those are the next steps in terms of our efforts and planned, planning for that pivoting to blended learning and our um plan to continue to move forward with the direction that we've been given around the, how to continue to look or to monitor our local public health um condition. So with that, I'll say we are Pasco and Dr. Person, you are more than welcome to stay for the second part of this presentation, but certainly recognize that um you may have other obligations or probably um subsequent late nights. So um we wouldn't be offended at all if, if you needed to excuse yourself from our board meeting this, this evening as I move on to the next part of this. So again, just to remind the board of this continuum of instructional delivery, we have been in this at-home learning model for most of our students. We are bringing small groups of students back in that blended learning model. We're preparing for the eventuality that we can move to blended learning, given um that moderate cases within our community. that moderate cases within our community and the data is looking like we'd meet that target. I did want to just remind the board and communicate about some of the framework. Now, the presentation I'm doing for you about our blended learning framework is not comprehensive. These are just some of the highlights, and certainly I can follow up with a deeper and more detailed report on any singular area of the framework, should the board request that. But I did want to highlight just some, some pieces of the framework. So as we're thinking about serving students onsite, which we're already doing, there is a daily health screening required onsite, temperature checks are required of all students, and an attestation is required by staff, and students are required to have an attestation done by, by parents. Parents are to fill out a daily attestation, and that's done using an online tool. Face coverings are required. There are very limited exceptions that apply. The verific, the, those exceptions have to be verified through a process through Benton Franklin Health Department. They're an active partner in helping us make some determinations about exception requests. And students are exempt from the face covering requirement when they are outside as long as they're maintaining, in addition to that social distancing. So students can go outside, take their mask off, stay way far away from each other and run around and be students. There is a six-foot social distancing requirement that will be maintained through all of the models and regimented cleaning protocols, increased hygiene practices. The implementation of what are called care rooms, care rooms allow us to be very nimble in the face of an ill staff member or student. It's a designated area within the school that is outfitted with the appropriate hygiene tools, hand sanitizer, additional masks, et cetera. There's also an air, air, increased air filtration through a like a humidifier or ventil, I don't, I kind of love ventilator, but that's not what it's called, but an additional air purifier in those rooms. We are lucky as a, a community in that our community has, has continued to invest in our levies, which allows us to have a nurse for every single one of our sites. So we're lucky in that regard. We have a school nurse. They've been actively involved in the training and in development of the public health guidance protocols. We have a designated health officer at each of our sites, and we're lucky to have Aubrey Pitzer, who's our risk manager, and she's been phenomenal at keeping up with all the guidance, interfacing with Ben Franklin Health Department. I talked already about the process for accommodations for at-risk employees, and there has been required training developed and deployed to staff using what's called safe schools, which allows us to make record of staff who've taken the, the training and it, so that we can monitor for accountability. And all of us have had to take it, their deadline was, you know, September first or wherever the deadline was. So I took mine, and even one of the modules has a little quiz, and you have to pass the quiz with a certain level of proficiency, or you have to re-watch the training and retake the quiz. So it's not just, there is some built-in mechanisms to ensure engagement. It's not like you could just turn it on and walk away and not actively participate because you have to take a quiz and score at a certain level of proficiency to, to be able to move on. Our nutrition services for the, the, the transition to blended learning, we were made aware that all of the waivers for federally for our federal nutrition services program were renewed through December, which allowed us to provide meals to all families at no cost. Initially, that one of our waivers were not, was not renewed, and we were going to have to charge certain families. So that was renewed at least through December. So we'll continue to do that. Meal service will be provided at each school. If it's my onsite day, if I'm a student who's being served onsite, or that's my day to be on at-school learning, then I would get my meal onsite. If that's my day to be at-home learning, then I would be getting my meals through a grab-and-go service, and we would continue the meal service utilizing our buses in those geographically isolated neighborhoods. There are social distancing and PPE protocols would be in place for meal service for both staff and students, and meal assembly will be done by nutrition services staff. So they have an eye on low-touch food options, and we would be eliminating things like our salad bar. Our, our kids in our traditional environment really do love the salad bar, but because of protecting it from exposure, we would be eliminating the salad bar during this time. Transportation will be provided to our students. We, we will be encouraging those who can walk or ride a bike or use family transportation to do so. And we would be reviewing and if possible, reworking bus routes to reduce the number of students on a bus or the duration of a trip. So physical distancing and PPE protocols for staff are, would be in place, and face coverings would be required for students. Physical distancing would be required to the extent possible for students, and frequently cleaning and disinfecting of bushes would, it would be in place, and increased ventilation through opening of windows, et cetera, would be in place as well. Our technology pieces remain very, very consistent during the blended learning model. There's really no change to that. Every student would get a device or has a device. We're, we're engaging all of the time to make sure that our students have access to internet. We will continue to utilize those core four applications that students are utilizing now on the days when students are at-home learning. Again, nothing around our instructional technology changes. It's still the same platforms. Those would be utilized by students when they were in the at-home learning component and potentially also utilized by teachers during the in-person delivery as well. IPAL continues to be an option for our families, even in the blended learning environment, through either those K, in grades K two, that curriculum kit-based option that's more of the feel of a homeschool support or our new virtual K five academy or our, our middle school and high school online programs of study. In the blended learning model, we would continue to lead with social emotional learning and meeting the needs of our, our social emotional learning needs of our students. The faced, there would be a balance of face-to-face instruction. So days when kids would be on campus receiving those face-to-face instruction, the face-to-face instruction, and then also time when students would be at-home learning, again, utilizing those core four tools, utilizing district adopted online curriculum materials and the online curriculum platforms, and utilizing the supplement, supplemental online resources, and daily office hours would be available for support. Daily attendance will still be required, assignments and assessments would be graded. School schedules is a big topic when you think about bringing students back in a blended learning model. This, these guidelines were developed in partnership with parents via surveys, and there were thousands of survey results over the summer. I believe there were two or three surveys done, each of them yielding anywhere from twenty-five hundred to thirty-six hundred survey responses. And then also the twenty-four focus groups that were done in July, and this school schedule actually had a subsequent set of focus groups done after the board gave us some feedback. So these guidelines were developed, again, in partnership with a broad base of stakeholders. And by far, the what we're calling an AABB in-person rotation. So students would be, for example, in school for face-to-face learning, like on a Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday is a day where the school has no students in it to allow for deep cleaning between the next cohort coming, which would be the students then that are served on Thursday and Friday. So it goes back to that suggestion that Dr. Person's made about the cohorting. You keep groups of kids together for two days. You use a day in between to deeply clean before you bring back the next cohort of students. So that AABB rotation was not only the preference of the stakeholders that engaged in that process, but also makes a lot of sense operationally when you think about cohorting and deep cleaning of facilities. The schedule, the schedule options, the, there was a feeling that we needed to build the schedule as close to the regular schedule as possible. There needed to be that continuation of office hours so that students were, that were engaged in at-home learning could still have access to teachers during the office hours, and that there would continue to be that designated, a designated day to support staff planning, collaboration, professional development, and that deep cleaning protocol, which is Wednesday, and that we would increase in-person services for our most vulnerable youth. So in terms of next steps, are, like I said, multiple times, our special education students returned to full, our special education students that were in full-day programs returned yesterday, and I have to tell you, it was a phenomenal sight as a superintendent to watch buses with kids on them pull up. I happened to be at Ray Reynolds Elementary as a bus pulled up, and I'm not bashful about it for one minute. I just burst into tears. I was so happy to see kids on campus, and I even got to get my picture taken with the very first student to show up at Ray Reynolds Elementary School. So I have a picture with her, our very first, first student at Ray Reynolds Middle School. And it just was extraordinary. I went and popped into classrooms like I love doing, and I visited with one of the special education students, and he was just so excited to be there and asked me a thousand questions, some I couldn't answer, and at some point I put my hand on my heart and I just said, oh, my heart is so full. And he looks at me and did the same thing, and he says, mine is fuller. So it was a great day yesterday to be superintendent. So the second phase of in-person services will begin on the twenty-eighth. We've targeted additional groups who need support, including our students at New Horizons High School, students who take advantage of our restorative, our rock or restorative opportunity center. These are students who have some at-risk based on behavior. Our students who are in, who are new to the country, who are learning a language in our, what is called our newcomers program, and our students who are designated as homeless. So we have a, a large number of students who designate, who are designated as homeless. And in that category of homelessness, there's a variety of impacts. We have seventeen students who have reported living in tents and cars, others who are living in hotels, others that are living in shelters, and others that are doubled up living in, in homes with other people. So certainly those, those students are in, on our mind, in our heart, and we're making accommodation to bring some of those students back on the twenty-eighth. We will continue with additional phases of small groups of students who are designated as at-risk as we also then plan for this opportunity to pivot to blended learning again, against that framework that was approved by the board on the eleventh. And right now, we're in the middle of bargaining the impacts of returning to in-person activities with our labor partners. So with that, if there's any other comments, I did hear some feedback and suggestions from the board specific to our blended learning model, and I'm happy to take those back to the team. Should there be others you want me to consider, I would be happy to add those to the list.
Thank you, Michelle. I guess I would like to see some data if we, if we, if you do choose to put a survey out to parents asking about the blended, the blended learning model, as you said, AABB, attend Monday, Tuesday, and do all asynchronous work on Thursday, Friday. I think that based on the input I've seen in the emails that the entire board's seen, there may be some students that might not do that well in having two days of school and then five days, I'll say on their own. I understand that there's asynchronous lessons out there, but that's very difficult. And so I guess I'd be interested in parent input, and then also Jeff Utech in, if it would make sense, if we're going to, if teachers are going to teach on Monday and Tuesday to a cohort, to, to zoom those meetings or Skype those meetings or record those meetings so that the kids in the other cohort can get the same lesson. Maybe we still have Wednesday off, and then on Thursday, Friday, a different cohort comes in for in-person learning, but allow the cohort that's doing asynchronous learning to take part via Zoom or Skype. I, I don't understand why our, why the tech experts don't like that method of learning. I guess I'd like to understand better, but I think a lot of parents would like that and, and believe that that would be better for their kids to sit there and zoom and Skype into that live class versus giving them an asynchronous lesson where they're not part of the classroom. And I believe we could teach twice as much, and if not twice as much, at least, you know, eighty percent more than what we're doing on that, that method. So I'd like to see some input back on that or some information back on that.
Thank you, Scott. All right, if we are done with questions with this, we will move on to the next, the next and last presentation on our enrollment update and outreach on future agenda item, or excuse me, an outreach, excuse me, enrollment app update and outreach.
So I am pleased to present to the board an update on our enrollment. Just two weeks ago, we were in front of you talking about our September fourth count. And so a lot has changed since then. So a couple of different things. One, we, there's some additional flexibility from the state that I'll highlight, and then just the tremendous efforts that have been made at the building level to really problem-solve and engage individually with families who needed additional support to navigate this virtual environment. So I just wanted to quickly orient you to this chart. Maybe the easiest way to think about it is over here is the twenty-twenty, this twenty-twenty, the September fourth count. This is the number of students who were counted as though it was a regular count day. So typically, or every year on the fourth day of school, we take account of our students. Then you look over here, and this is the twenty-twenty revised. That was based on some flexibility that was given us by, given to us by the state, and I just really want to express my sincere gratitude to our partners at OSPI who completely understood that this was a unique year and that it was going to take some very targeted outreach to help our families engage. So the flexibility that OSPI has given us is if a student was enrolled by September fourth and engaged at any time during September, we're able to count them in this revised, this revised count. Had OSPI not made that accommodation, any student who we hadn't made contact with on September fourth would not be able to be counted in our enrollment. So it was a significant change or significant improvement for us in our enrollments. So also on the slide, it shows not engaged, not yet engaged. So this shows the families, the number of families who we just, based on all of our efforts, just haven't had the opportunity to connect with yet. And notice that it says yet because our staff is diligently working every day to engage and connect with, with our students. Then it also calls out new enrollment. So any student who has enrolled between the eighth and presently. So we thought that was also important for the board to see that in the midst of all of this, we're still getting brand-new students who are moving into our schools as well. So this shows elementary enrollments. I'll give you a chance to look at these data on the rest of our elementaries. And then our middle schools. And lastly, our high schools. And then our overall. So our overall enrollment, when we were all together before, just as a summary, when we presented information to you on September eighth, at that time, we were seeing a decrease in student enrollment of equivalent of a little over twelve hundred students, which was a decrease of six point seven percent. Based on the flexibility given to us by OSPI and the extraordinary efforts of the staff at our, our school-based staff, we were able to engage a little over a thousand additional kids. One thousand thirty-three students have engaged. So our revised decrease is two hundred and twenty-two students. So the revised decrease in our enrollment is one point two percent. This would not have been possible had it not been for the collaborative effort with OSPI and the deep, deep commitment that and the deep, deep commitment that our school-based staff has in knowing every single student by name, strength and need and literally going out and finding them. Our school teams put forth every effort to locate and engage these students. They did things like personal phone calls, robocalls, emails, core four contacts and home visits. I spoke to some principals and had them send me some little, some anecdotes about how did your staff really do this? I mean, it was a Herculean effort. So one of the students, the principal told the story of a student that got to report on yesterday and the principal was asking him, are you excited to be here? And the student said, I'm one of the lucky ones. I've been waiting all summer to come to come back since all summer. So the student was really excited to come back. Another principal told the story of one of our local shelters, homeless shelter for teens. The per- the our administrator showed up there with one of our social workers and the person that works there said, you you are now four people that work for your building have already contacted us here looking for that same student. So that same student had four outreaches by by staff and two people show up looking for that student. The the many buildings report doing face to face visits. One of the buildings reported doing an all call, kind of like, hey, every employee that's in the building, we need your help making these phone calls to find kids. They were able to connect with three hundred kids in three hours. There was that many staff who doubled down their efforts. They all came, the all, they made the all call, they all came, they split up students and they were able to contact three hundred kids in three hours. Counselors are doing outreach, especially for our most vulnerable kids that are in homeless situations. There was a story about a student, a family who is designated as homeless. A counselor went out and made contact with the family. The family was having a difficult time accessing because of technology. So the family came to the school and the 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 two little girls came in their their new school dresses with their hair all in the beautiful braids with all of the ribbons. One of our vice principals starts every morning with a list of home visits before he they report to work. And one of our, this was not reported by the person, but on the person's behalf, that even on our day where we had the most hazardous air quality in the in our community, this person was out doing home visits, literally going door to door to find our kids. So I tell you those anecdotes to just underscore my statement of gratitude for who are our employees are. And when I say we are Pasco, we have staff who walk that walk of truly bridging the gap for those students who need us the most. So I'm proud to serve and honored to be the superintendent and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me. And I almost made it. I almost made it all the way through, even with all the good stories.
That is fantastic news. Oh, we were excited, so excited to hear that. That's incredible and and we are so grateful for all of the hard work our teachers are doing. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just want a shout out to all the all the employees and staff and everybody that's gone out there and done all that extra to get a hold of the of all of our students and families. I know you know that they're doing it and you know how much they want their kids back and we appreciate it.
Well, if, oh, go ahead, Ms. Whitney. Well, I just wanted to, you know, I highlighted some stories there. You know, there's a lot of effort by teachers that went into finding kids and then the the counselor would get involved. So I don't want to go without just really acknowledging the efforts that individual teachers made in finding those students. And a couple of our teachers made comment tonight. I've had conversation with teachers who, you know, one of the teachers had almost all of her kids show up on the first day, but she was going out to look for the four she was missing. So it just really is, like I said, a testament to the the fundamental commitment to who we are as a community. And like I said, I just couldn't be prouder. But I wanted to make sure to highlight while the many of those anecdotes were highlighting people that were going out to do home visits, there's a huge effort that was made to narrow the number of of contacts that needed to be made through those personalized methods by the teacher outreach that was done in advance.
Thank you. I I appreciate that great work. That was that was such wonderful news. So and I think we're all grateful that we are not, we are no longer down over six percent and we're just down now just over one percent. That's pretty incredible. And let's move on to future agenda items if there's no comments.
So future agenda items, as we discussed earlier in the study session, Mr. John Safarli will be here for this, the study session that will be focused on the Voting Rights Act. So that will happen during study session. And then during the actual board meeting, I will do the the promised COVID conditions report. And then we are working to see if Jeff Utech would be available to come and do some interface with you as a board around this blended learning. What does it mean? How is it the same or different than a traditional learning environment? But we thought perhaps as a board, we've referenced him so much and told stories about him so much that we thought perhaps as a board, you might like to hear directly from him. And he truly is the virtual learning expert. We're all learning just right in front of our kids. So he could answer complex questions in a way that as as superintendent I can't. So we're going to work with him to see if he can't maybe come on the thirteenth, if not the thirteenth, we'll work to get him here at a subsequent board meeting.
All right, is there anything else from the board before we adjourn?
So I just wanted to just let you know that this week, this Friday is our general assembly where we're going to talk about permanent positions and legislative positions. You're welcome to join in if you'd like. If you go to the WADA website under their it used to be legislative, but they've got another name for it. Now anyway, you you'll find it on the website. I'll be there all day as a voting delegate. And just for your information, so our our annual conference this year is all virtual. I don't know if everybody's heard that, but so we won't be going to Spokane. It will be all online. But you're still encouraged to attend and in some ways this will be easier. We won't have to travel, but it will, we won't have the same interaction that we've had in previous years. Just a couple of WADA dates there.
Well, I sure hope they record those, some of those classes. They are really great classes and I sometimes have to choose between good, better and best. So that would be great. Then I can attend more. Um, all right.
This is an old on that. So that's one of the benefits this year of doing it online is they will all be recorded and they will all be available throughout the next year. So you can you can watch them all at some point if you were so inclined.
I don't know if I'd watch them all, but I would definitely watch more than I could normally go to. So thanks, Steve. Thank you for that information. If, is there anything else?
Just congratulations to you and your new baby.
Oh, thanks. My oldest son just had a baby. So we, I have a grandma for the first time. So I missed some of today's meetings, traveling down to Utah to be with them. So thank you. Thank you for that. We are excited about this new little girl to join our family. So, all right. Well, thank you, everyone. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.